Okay. Yeah, I want to see if you have a little text there.
Meeting call the order, please. Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Yehudi.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Counsel Gitcher.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Newman.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any memorial today? Consolation?
Thank you. I'd like to do a moment of silence for James M. Quealy, retired fireman. James Quealy passed away surrounded by his family on January 3rd. Jim was the son of David Margaret O'Hare. Quealy born October 6, 1939 in Dorchester. He was the beloved wife of Charlotte Peachey Dowling Quealy for over 52 years. Growing up in Lowell, he was a member of the Sacred Heart Parish and later a communitarian of the Immaculate Conception Church. 1965, Jim joined the Lowell Fire Department and rose to the rank of lieutenant. He was a proud-serving member for 39 years before retiring in 2004. In addition to Jim's wife Peachey, Jim is survived by his daughter Holly McInnesby and her husband Dan of Lowell; Kerry Ryan and her husband Terry Ryan of Westford, Terry the parking director for City Lowell; son-in-law Rob Gum of Hollis, New Hampshire, and his eight grandchildren. Jim is also survived by his sister Claire. He would be sorely missed. Thank you.
Any other memorial? Here, Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. Welcome everyone to the chamber and happy new year again. Before we start the meeting, I think we are being requested by the Lowell Sun to take a photo of the entire board for this new year. So if all the council will indulge me, please come forward so the Lowell Sun can take a group photo of us and they will write positive stories going forward.
You're with me.
With the law?
Yes.
Michael Carey.
Clerk.
Like I told you, you need anything.
Give me a call.
What any of you need, actually.
Oh, no.
Turn your shoulders aside. The back row.
Well, start the meeting with the mayor's business, section two, 2.1, communication, remote Zoom participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Gitcher. Motion is adopted. We now go to section three, city clerk, 3.1, minutes, city council regular meeting, January 3rd for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Leahy on favor of the appelle say no to ICE habit. Motion is carried. We'll start with, we now go to section four, which is the communication from city manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with motion response A on city vehicles. Any comments, Counsel Robinson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the report. Through you to the manager, is this, is this current? I mean, is this something that you've had an opportunity to review? Do you feel like a lot of these still fit those needs and requirements? Because I know this is an older list. And if so, would it be possible to get a breakdown maybe for next week on what types of on-call emergencies warrant the use of these vehicles?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Yes, we have looked at it, but counselor, I can get you that additional information. For instance, we broke down in from wastewater and there were 173 emergency phone calls. So how that happened and who that was, I can, we can drill that down to make sure. With the police, with fire and police, it is something that, you know, since you're, since you had brought this up, we've looked at different pieces and we, I do understand it's something we should be looking at. We just received another piece from the auditor, I believe, with 65 cents per mile as to, we're trying to figure out what the best way to respond to emergency situations from a 24/7. So if you'd like, I can try to break it down even further with the emergency calls. Like I said, wastewater seemed to have a pretty good breakdown of the sending folks to the nine wastewater CSO stations, the 14 pump stations, any other type of electrical backups, block sewer lines, and they actually had the number of emergencies. And I can go through the other departments to find out exactly how many other emergencies there were and what is needed, if that's appropriate for you, sir.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. So we could defer this maybe next week?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Chow.
Through you to the manager.
Do we pass out this policy once a year to be signed by the people who are actually taking these vehicles home?
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. They are, they have been sent out. I know that HR has sent them out. I'm going to have to defer, are they signed by each person that takes the vehicle home? And I'm going to say that I know that they are sent out to folks. Superintendent?
So, Mr. Manager, when we got to any of the police vehicles, they're additionally covered by a police department policy and procedure on take-home vehicles, and they signed for that as well, and they get the policy that they're taking home under the different provisions.
My question was more towards all departments, not towards, it would probably be for HR. So my question is, is this policy signed yearly by the people taking it? Because if there's any changes within, they should be made aware of this and brought forward because many times you see these vehicles in places that are not, as outlined in here, the shortest route to their homes. So I think that it needs to be up, and many of these vehicles don't adhere to the policy that was given. So when you look at it, it says in the policy that as it's written, it says all city vehicles will have a vehicle identification number four inches by three inches and city emblems no smaller than 10 inches wide by 10 inches high affixed to their exterior, no magnetic signs, on both doors, side and passenger side of the vehicle. So there's many things in here that I think that maybe department heads, if you've been here a long time, it gets kind of repetitive. And you see these vehicles knowing where some of these people live, not in the shortest path to their home. So these vehicles are not to be taken outside of police and fire, you know, that they're a separate entity to this thing. But when you start looking at it, you have five vehicles from wastewater. I know there's 173 emergency calls. But if I'm out with my wife at a supermarket, do I drive home, get that vehicle and go there? Or do I drive from the supermarket to the emergency? So sometimes these
Thank you.
Any other memorial? Here, Mr. Clark, please dim the light. Welcome everyone to the chamber and happy new year again. Before we start the meeting, I think we are being requested by the Low Son to take a photo of the entire board for this new year. So if all the council will indulge me, please come forward. So the Low Son can take a group photo of us and they will write positive stories going forward.
You with me?
With the law?
Yes.
Michael Gary, your clerk.
Like I told you, you need anything.
Give me your call log.
What any of it, thank you.
Well, start the meeting with the mayor's business, section two, 2.1. Communication, remote Zoom participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Council Drinkwater, second by Council Gishia. Motion is adopted. We now go to section three, city clerk, 3.1. Minutes, city council regular meeting, January 3rd for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Council Janess, second by Council Leahy on favor of the outpost, say no to ICE, have it, motion is carried. Well, start with, we now go to section four, which is the communication from city manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with motion response A on city vehicles. Any comments, Council Robinson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the report. Through you to the manager, is this, is this current? I mean, is this something that you've had an opportunity to review? Do you feel like a lot of these still fit those needs and requirements? Because I know this is an older list. And if so, would it be possible to get a breakdown maybe for next week on what types of on-call emergencies warrant the use of these vehicles?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Yes, we have looked at it, but councillor, I can get you that additional information. For instance, we broke down in from wastewater and there were 173 emergency phone calls. So how that happened and who that was, I can, we can drill that down to make sure. With the police, with fire and police, it is something that, you know, since you had brought this up, we've looked at different pieces and we, I do understand it's something we should be looking at. We just received another piece from the auditor, I believe it was 65 cents per mile, as to, we're trying to figure out what the best way to respond to emergency situations from a 24/7. So if you'd like, I can try to break it down even further with the emergency calls. Like I said, wastewater seemed to have a pretty good breakdown of the sending folks to the nine wastewater CSO stations, the 14 pump stations, any other type of electrical backups, block sewer lines, and they actually had the number of emergencies. And I can go through the other departments to find out exactly how many other emergencies there were and what is needed, if that's appropriate for you, sir.
I'd appreciate that, thank you very much. So we could defer this maybe next week?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Council Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager, do we pass out this policy once a year to be signed by the people who are actually taking these vehicles home?
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, they are, they have been sent out. I know that HR has sent them out. I'm going to have to defer, are they signed by each person that takes the vehicle home? And I'm going to say that I know that they are sent out to folks. Superintendent?
So, Mr. Mayor, when we got to any of the police vehicles, they're additionally covered by a police department policy and procedure on take-home vehicles, and they signed for that as well, and they did get the policy that they're taking home under the different provisions.
My question was more towards all departments, not towards, it would probably be for HR. So my question is, is this policy signed yearly by the people taking it? Because if there's any changes within, they should be made aware of this and brought forward, because many times you see these vehicles in places that are not, as outlined in here, the shortest route to their homes. So I think that it needs to be up, and many of these vehicles don't adhere to the policy that was given. So when you look at it, it says in the policy that, as it's written, it says all city vehicles will have a vehicle identification number four inches by three inches, and city emblems no smaller than 10 inches wide by 10 inches high affixed to their exterior, no magnetic signs, on both doors, side and passenger side of the vehicle. So there's many things in here that I think that maybe department heads, if you've been here a long time, it gets kind of repetitive. And you see these vehicles knowing where some of these people live, not in the shortest path to their home. So these vehicles are not to be taken, outside of police and fire, you know, that they're a separate entity to this thing. But when you start looking at it, you have five vehicles from wastewater. I know there's 173 emergency calls. But if I'm out with my wife at a supermarket, do I drive home, get that vehicle and go there, or do I drive from the supermarket to the emergency? So sometimes these hinder the process if you're not able to do certain things with them. And I just think that the policy needs to be followed if you have a policy. And if there are changes within the policy that everyone agrees to, then put that in the policy. But you see these vehicles at other places outside of the shortest path to their home as outlined in this. So is this every year signed by each employee? And do we keep a signed copy of them, of the policy signed by them in HR?
I don't have a signed policy in HR, but it's given to the department heads once a year, and they're to give it to the employees. And each, this policy should be kept in each vehicle in case of car accident or what they should do or something comes up. But I don't have anything signed in the HR that the employee received it. But I can do that.
I think it would be important, because I've never, and I've worked in this community before, I've never seen this, and I had a take-home vehicle. So I've never signed it. So I just think that if we're going to back up that it's handed to someone, we should verify that they're actually getting it and get their signature back. If they don't want to sign it, they can always put an X on it. It's not a big deal, as long as they received it and we have a backplate to it saying, okay, it was signed. I just think it's a good policy to have, and they should understand that each vehicle, when I worked at the water department, I had to put all of those stickers on the vehicles because they were absent of them. And I drive by one every day at the water department that does not have it on, a brand-new Explorer that's out there, has two little numbers in a window, it doesn't say any identifications on it. So I think as we start looking at these vehicles and the take-home vehicles, I think, if the policy wants to change, I have no problem with the policy changing. I'm just saying, if we have a written policy, we should follow it.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think the points are well taken, and I think we'll, you know, go through this again. Councillor, with assistance, maybe we can have this discussion, bring it back next week or the week after. But of course, bringing this back and forth to whatever the, you know, whatever the wish of the council is on assignment of vehicles. So we can have that discussion and whether it be next week or the week after, councillor. Thank you.
No other comments on that motion response? We now go to the second motion response on animal control and vet services. Council Mercier?
Mr. Mayor, before Council Mercier speaks, could we, could I suspend the rules to bundle 5.1 with it, because they kind of coincide with each other, if that's okay with Council Mercier?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Council Gishia to take up, is it a motion 5.1?
It's a vote.
5.1 to go with motion response B. On the vote in 5.1, is the vote authorized payment of bills incurred in excess of appropriation? LPD with full reading and second reading by title. City floor and city council to approve the payment of unpaid invoices from prior fiscal years for the police department. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I first want to thank interim Superintendent Barry Golna, who was gracious enough to call me and schedule an appointment, even though he was on vacation, he still found the time to come and meet with me, along with Deputy LeBlanc, Lieutenant Panagiotakis. We did meet at the police department to talk about all the questions that I had, as well as Connor Baldwin was there as well. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for letting Connor come as well. This was a very interesting meeting, very important. They answered my questions. And I just want to say, I don't apologize for asking any of these questions. When I have concern about people or animals or any question that I have, I do expect to get answers. Maybe it would be an answer that I don't want to hear, but then we can correct it. As far as what took place at that meeting, it was very cordial. I get all the answers that I was looking for. And I don't have a problem with asking about our veterinarians, is there, what procedure do we have for injured animals? And as you can see, there was a discrepancy, because next on the agenda is going to be a very important vote. This vote is totaling almost $8,000 in bills that's going to two veterinarian areas, at Balja Veterinary Hospital and the Westford Veterinary Emergency and Referral Center. If I didn't have a concern, maybe this wouldn't have came to light, I don't know. But the fact is, it is coming to light, and I would urge my colleagues to please vote and clear this up, because they're unpaid back bills, and they're very important that we pay them for the sake of injured or abandoned animals who have needs and feelings like human beings. And so I think it's a very important meeting. I want to vote. I want to know that we have a good rapport with the Humane Society. When you read an article in the paper that said, nobody answered the phone or whatever, it bothers me, but I did find out that there is a good rapport going on. I want to make sure that the staff that work there have the proper gear, the bite gloves, and they're protected. They don't just go out into the street with a clipboard. I want them to have protection, because when an animal is injured, that nice animal is a different type of an animal. They're very afraid and they tend to bite, and I don't want any of our city employees getting hurt. I also had a concern with if someone has to pay for getting their shots. I expect the city to be responsible for that, and I'm understanding that they are. And I'm understanding that if one person has to pay, that's not acceptable. But I find that people are reimbursed, so the questions that I had were answered. I'm very satisfied. I thank people for putting the meeting together, and I urge my colleagues to please vote for the welfare and sake of animals through no fault of their own or abandoned or hurt. We need to help animals. So I just want to make the bills right. So thank you for everybody bringing this issue to light and clarifying it. Thank you.
Council Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the chief, Chief Golna. It just behooves me to look at these bills and understand that they're a year old. And the more I look at them, the more I question the policies and procedures of the city. I don't understand how bills get sent back in January, January to March, Balja sent 11 bills. And from March to June, Westford sent 15 invoices. Could you explain what the policy was prior to any changes that are outlined in here that we're doing? What the policy was on who received these invoices? And you don't have to get into a person's name, because I understand the personnel laws. Why it was set up that way and how we're at this position a year later? Because I do have questions for the CFO, as I did ask him before the meeting, a couple of questions about policies on purchase orders and policies on invoicing, and how do they get paid? And is there a policy that goes, that the CFO would have in place for all departments to follow? Because the police department does law, and they, I don't expect this to be something that is your forte in purchase orders, paying invoices. But somebody over there, when you have finance teams over there, should be putting policies in place that prevents this from happening. And if officer, an animal control officer picks up an animal, brings it to Westford or Balja, there should be kind of, some kind of slip that comes with that animal as it's turned in. So that animal control officer should, at some point, give it to their superior officer. From that point, it goes to the superior officer. What happened? Were they turning these over to the superior officer? And how did they not know that these animals, we had invoices?
So when the issue arose and we started looking into it, at first, or initially, we found that there was a problem. There were some issues with the animal control officers getting invoices to the superior officers, as well as problems with the facility sending invoices to the PD to be paid. So we had some communication issues internally. Deputy LeBlanc had sat down with lieutenant, and we thought we had put some mechanisms in place that would rectify it, but we found it didn't. So we had to look at this again. And what we've done, and the policy in place, I think, is something that will rectify the situation going forward, in that the police department, every time we take a call, we log it into the CAD system with a report number. So now every single time that the animal control officers drop an animal off at one of the facilities, they give the facility a report number. That report number will then be entered into or on the invoice. So whether or not the animal control officer receives an invoice, the number's on the invoice. The animal control officer will then, in turn, write a report, whether it's as simple as a few lines, I dropped off an injured feline or canine at Westford because it was hit by a cow, whatever the issue may be. The Sergeant Fichette, who was in charge of the animal control, he will then take the report, match it with an invoice with the report number, and then he approves it to be sent to purchasing, and they will pay those invoices now. So now there's a documented incident report from the police department, so that there's no problem or issues with services that might not have been rendered, with a billing issue or something. So we're now assured that we dropped off an animal for service, and we have a bill and an invoice that matches that report number, then they go forward for payment. So there'll be no issues with our payments going forward. The sergeant is scheduled to meet with animal control now on a weekly basis to go over other invoices from our TM's kennel, which we have a contract with for a certain amount of money. The other emergency veterinarians, we don't have contracts with, those are based on emergency services only, and those report numbers will be matched up. Again, with TM's kennel, they should be filing reports that say that we had a dog there, or maybe it's something that was a result of a seizure or a fine, and they match that up. Sergeant Fichette will then give it to Kathy in purchasing, and all those invoices will be paid, or it will be paid out of the contract if it's TM's kennel. So we're trying to do a fail-safe and make sure that on a weekly basis, we're going over all the bills and reports and matching it up. We know we had some issues in the past, and unfortunately, it came to the point where, you know, it was several thousand dollars between Westford and Balja. Balja, some of them, we had some discrepancies with, and they sent the invoices to Deputy LeBlanc and our finance director, T N Nagoin. And they went through those, and we were able to determine that some of them were already paid or some of the issues. So we have gone through them with a fine-tooth comb with our finance and Deputy LeBlanc. Weed out the ones, and the bills that you have here today have been checked for correctness, and those are funds that the city does owe to these entities. We're hoping, we're hoping, moving forward, that the system that we put in place, number one, will protect the city from any false charges, and will protect us moving forward, that we won't be looking at back bills in the future. And now putting the sergeant in charge, and the sergeant meets with purchasing once a week to go over any of the invoices. So Westford and Balja also know, they email Sergeant Fichette and Kathy in purchasing with every invoice as well. So whether or not the animal control officer does get one in hand that evening, sometimes they don't have staff, depending on the time, to give us the bill, that invoice will have the report number, and they'll email Sergeant Fichette and Kathy, and we'll match it with those reports, and we'll make sure that moving forward, that those billing issues won't happen again.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to CFO Baldwin. Internal finance controls fall under your purview. When departments change policies like this, or have policies like this, do they come to you for your approval? Did you know about this policy that they had prior to this policy change?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So generally, as it relates to procurement, the city's reserve system ordinance controls the requirement for a purchase order and most of the methodology used for procurement. It's further regulated by city policy. We have an accounts payable policy that all departments are responsible for adherence to. As it relates to the police department, the chief and I have talked about this, as Council Mercier mentioned, we did discuss the issue at hand, as well as improvements to the process that the police department have made. And, you know, we feel that this new procedure will help weed out any breakdown in internal controls that may have existed prior.
So I guess I'm not going to get the answer I'm asking. What I asked is, prior to this policy we just heard from the chief, did you hear that policy before this minute tonight, that they were putting this policy in place? In the prior policy, were you aware of prior to this all going on? Because I just think, as we get into each department, we have to have policies in place that say, look, here is the purchase. I get the purchase order piece, and I agree with you on that. You guys check off in Munis, okay, we have the funding, we want this purchase order. But after that, it becomes a policy on the city's side that says, who can expend these funds during this purchase order? How do we track the invoice system? And how do we track it back? So that's what the question is. And it sounds to me like you weren't aware of this past practice that was in place, or your team wasn't aware of it, because I don't expect you to dive down into this end when you have an assistant. But there is no reason any invoice should be a year late when it was sent in January from a place. Going back to the chief, did either one of these places shut off the city from services during that time while they were waiting for invoicing?
It was through you, Mr. Manager, to the councillor. So in one instance, Westford had shut us down for probably about a week, and that was as a result of, what ended up happening was, when we did receive the invoices, it was in June for Westford, so the purchase order had already been closed for the fiscal year for that, because they were unaware. Our finance was unaware that those invoices were there. So when we did receive them, you know, we put the initial motion to the council or, you know, request to the council. And in doing our due diligence, we, the Balja invoices came to our attention.
So we were shut off by one of these companies because of non-payment. They were saying, you didn't pay our invoices. It took from June of last year to today to get these to us. It just doesn't jive. And the problem is, is that as I look at this, this tells me nothing. This gives me an invoice. I don't have the slip that went to the animal control officer attached to it, saying, okay, this is the bill. This just tells me I have a bill. And take everybody's word for it that basically couldn't follow or track the invoicing, that this is okay to pay. In government, we have to have backup to invoicing. So whatever they got at the position or anything, should have followed these from Westford or Balja, should have sent it over and said, look, here's what we gave your officer, here's what it is. Because you don't know, you weren't there, so you have no idea. You're like, okay, yeah, and then you run through. We should have had it in the packet.
And that's, yeah, and that's what, so what ends up happening is, a lot of times, when the animal control initially drops off the animal, the owner is unknown, so we get billed. So the due diligence process that was kind of slowing it down was, what ends up happening is, if the next day, the animal control officer determines that the dog or cat, whatever, has an owner, the invoicing would go to them. So that was what the check and balance was internally, that the communication issue was, was confirming that those invoices should be billed to the police department and not to an owner. So what we ended up doing after the initial determination that this was happening was, we created report classifications, so that the reports, instead of being just a generic animal control report, would be specific to either a veterinarian bill, a kenneling bill. So when that occurred, we thought that, we also initiated the once-a-week meetings between the animal control and finance. When that fell through and we realized that, that still wasn't making the process more efficient of double-checking that the invoices were correct, that's when we instituted the process where the sergeant and finance get all the invoices direct by email, the report numbers are additionally added to the invoices as well. So the invoices, even if you're seeing invoice that might say March, especially specific to Westford, we didn't get any of those until June. And at that point, the purchase order had already been closed, so that was why.
The only thing I can go on, on the invoices, is the date on the invoice, because you don't have anything saying anything else. It would almost be, and I'll put it in your world, is like trying to give someone a ticket and losing the backing to the ticket and saying this ticket's valid. So that's my issue with this all. I'm not in favor of paying these bills. I think we need more information to pay them, and I think they've already waited a year. So I would just, I would recommend not, I'd vote no tonight on these, and making them come back to us with the information, so that we have a recorded information for each one. I just take this serious when I look at invoicing and how it's paid and what the backup is for each invoice. Thank you.
Council Scott?
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Have these been researched, that they're valid bills already with the police department?
Yep. Yes. Mr. Manager, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, they have, and included in the packet, and as, which is a requirement of the statute that allows the auditor to authorize payment, is a certification from both the officer from the police department, as well as the vendor, that these goods and services were ordered and were provided by both the vendor and by the city. And that's signed under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Chief, or maybe before that, let me just also say this. I share Counselor Gitcher frustration, you know, with this bad billing. This has not happened a few weeks ago. This has happened since January, and this bill built up. However, I do also understand that service has been provided, you know, so the people that provide service, they need to be paid. It's our fault. Maybe department head, maybe internal lack of communication, but going forward, I'm happy to hear the chief indicated that policy being in place, put in place, and I hope that the policies is really, people work on this, is work on these policies, and you have process in term of procurement. Department head put out, you know, when you want to buy something or service something, you put it out, and that's what you do. You don't wait until, you know, a couple months later and said, "Okay, now, let put this in." And by the process, get to it, it's a year. It's not, it's not right. So I know the frustration that Counselor Gitcher has, and, you know, I, but I, I'm with the idea that we service being paid, being served to us, and we need to pay these people. So going forward, I hope that the same communication and the same problem doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I just would like to know, this new policy that's drafted and created, I heard it involves animal control. Has this new policy been thoroughly explained, and have they been trained on it, and have they signed off on this new policy so everyone's on the same page?
So in terms of the billing issue, that's between the animal control sergeant, animal control division, and purchasing. They've met, the deputies met with everyone, and everyone's on the same page. With regard to the animal control policy and the changes we made in the policy, our accreditation manager is updating the policy regarding animal control and some of the changes that we put in place, regarding animal control and are being updated. And then every single member of the department will get the new policy put out through our computer system. Then they have to sign off with their initials in the computer system, and that there's a record of that, that everyone will have signed off as soon as all the changes are made in the policy.
Thank you. So, I mean, further than just receiving, have they been trained and familiarized with moving forward, the way it's going to work?
And additionally, we've met with our communications manager, and our dispatches are going to be made aware of the new policy and the changes we've made to the animal control system to avoid some of the issues that we've had with animal control. So, yes, they're trained through their managers. The officers have to read over the policies and say that they have understood and read the policy, and sign off on it as well, so...
Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say that I appreciate the sentiments that Counselor Mercier expressed earlier in regards to the animals, as well as to the city paying its bills. So I appreciate the frustration expressed by Counselor Gitcher. The time between when this happened and now, when we're actually dealing with it, is excessive. And I hope that, going forward, these new policies and procedures that have been put in place, which sound like they're going to keep this from happening again, I'm hoping that that is true. To that end, I'd like to ask the manager, or maybe the CFO, if you put something in your calendar, at the end of the quarter, I think we should, for the next couple quarters, we should do some outreach to these vendors. Just place a phone call and say, "Hey, are we up to date? What's outstanding?" So that we don't get caught behind the eight ball here again. If we do that in March, if we do that in May, you know, it keeps us from, from putting us in a situation where we can't get the services we need. So I'll make that in the form of a motion, if necessary, that at the end of each quarter, we perform an audit and make sure that all our bills are paid, or at least in the system and the process of being paid for these vendors. Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Janess.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercier. That motion is passed. Counselor Rook?
I move to approve.
Second by Counselor Yum. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gitcher?
No.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Teniers?
We now go to the next motion response.
Mr. Mayor, quick question.
Counselor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, to the chief, and maybe Mr. Baldwin, now that the bill is paid, are we still using these two vendors, the Westford and the Bulger, or are we looking for a local veterinarian that we can do business with? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Counselor, yes, we are still using. We've never been without their services. You know, they understood the issue, and we, Deputy LeBlanc had called them, and we were never without the services of the emergency care vendors, and we continue to use them, and we'll continue as we move forward.
Thank you.
The next motion response is on homelessness prevention funding. Mr. Clerk, do we have a registered speaker on this one?
We do, Mr. Mayor. It's Anna Isler Kobash.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here again, and I'm sorry, and I'm not being rude, I have eye condition, I'll give you a little bit of eye contact, but these lights make me sick. On again, behalf of everybody that's homeless out there, I found out that the shelter at the Lowell Transitional Living Center is full, it's at full capacity. They've taken away life connections funding, so 30 people can't have a bed there. They have put me and others in a hotel, thanks to you and me speaking out last time. But here comes the problem of, in the next three weeks, they're doing a sweep of all the encampments and destroying them all, from what I'm hearing. And I have been trying slowly to get my stuff out of where I was, but I'm disabled, so it takes time and rides and getting everybody to help me. And other people don't have that option. And where is everybody going at the end of March, when they throw us all out of the hotels? I mean, we need a more permanent solution and a better solution than this. We feel like we're in jail at this hotel, too. I mean, something's got to give. Can we get those pods where they are recycled? There's power down by the river already that they had put in, I guess, before. I mean, the situation isn't going to go away. It's here. It's, you can move the encampments, we all know they're going to move somewhere else, and then you're going to have this problem all over again. Can we come up with a more permanent solution for the town? Because it's just not going to go away. And it's also not fair that we're treated like second-class citizens. We matter.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Counselor Rook?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and as far as, you know, my everyday job, working for the probation department, I don't know if Counselor Mercier can back this up, I'm aware of plenty of beds at the shelter. I don't know, Mr. Manager, if you know that as well, but we have people that come into court all the time, and they head over there, just, you know, neither here nor there. As far as the motion response, I think it shows what the city does do, the extensive amount of monies that's been, you know, given, granted, awarded to a bunch of different agencies to fight not only homelessness, but, you know, food distribution, and, you know, job trainings and things like that. You know, and I think the report shows that there are resources out there if somebody wants to utilize them. You know, and, you know, if someone's legitimately homeless, then we need to concentrate on that population. If someone chooses to be homeless, then, you know, I'm sorry, that's on them. So, you know, there are resources that are available currently. I know it's getting colder and things like that, but, again, this, I think, report here, you know, shows that the city goes above and beyond in their efforts to help this cause. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I have to concur with my colleague. I keep hearing the stories of how there's no beds available, but yet, we've had people stand at the podium and say how they don't want to go, that they want to be left where they're living in certain areas. So, I mean, if there are resources available, I think it's time that we try to help people utilize these resources. And I'm sorry, it's not going to be a pick of which resource you like better. The resources are provided, and I think you're going to have to take advantage of them. And if you truly are in a position where there's zero beds available, there's no resources available, that's a completely different discussion. But from the people that are engaged in the trenches with this, that's not what I'm hearing at all. I'm hearing that from a certain group that's not able to operate the way that they're looking to operate, but for the most part, there are resources and services provided currently, and they'll continually be provided. So, I mean, if there's a real concern about no beds available, then please, show us some proof of that. Show us, or bring people to the podium that can testify to being turned away. I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing second-hand information. And as far as sweeps go, the city has been consistent. The city consistently has been saying, "If we are looking to move anybody, we will provide an alternative first." So, I mean, it's, it just seems like it's repetitive now. We're hearing the same group, the same people come to the podium, saying they wish it was one way, that isn't anymore. I mean, "We're willing to work with you. We're willing to provide services. We understand, and we agree." No one's a second-class citizen here. We understand this, and we are willing to provide whatever's needed, but it's not going to be on one set of terms, and that's it, that's all. So I think we need to find a compromise here. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager, understand, Ms. Fitzpatrick would like to make a statement.
Hi, good evening, Counsel. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. First of all, as the Director of Homelessness Initiatives in the city, I sincerely apologize if you feel like you have been treated like a second-class citizen, and I mean that. I'm here to advocate for the people in the city who are unsheltered and homeless. Currently, and I can send you these numbers, Council members, if you would like an email on what is available currently. We have, let's see, we have, well, we have some pending things that are available. We have 35 beds pending over on Westford Street through Lowell Transitional Housing. We have seven more beds pending at the CTI Hotel out in Chelmsford, but we also have space at the shelter downtown. I think we have about eight spaces there. That fluctuates on a day-to-day basis, because that is, you know, whoever comes in, comes in. The hotel numbers are a little more solid. We also have six spaces at the hotel in Chelmsford that are available. So altogether, you know, in a couple of weeks, we will have 60 solid places. Right now, we have about 25 to 30. But I can send you those numbers. I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Man, through you to the council. Counselors, we are working on what we thought would be, every two weeks per the discussion with the council, with these particular numbers, so you'll know exactly what is happening outside. We do have our co-op team heading out daily to count noses and find out who's out there, find out what needs to be done, and how we can assist the folks who are homeless with the best resources that we have. We do really anticipate, as we've been talking about this, some of the, some of the exciting news Ms. Fitzpatrick's just talked about, where we are trying to expand opportunities for folks. So if you could give us a little bit more time, Ms. Fitzpatrick and I have been going back and forth on how to give that information to the council, so at least on an every-two-week basis, you'll know where we are throughout the city of Lowell, and give her time to get that information, which, Ms. Fitzpatrick, I think you get it on Tuesdays, I want to say.
And I will be sending that out on Thursday.
Correct.
Also, just to mention that, you know, the sweeping of the, as you said, the sweeping of the encampments, the people at the co-op spend a lot of time going out to the encampments, as do some of the Lowell PD, and they know a lot of the people in the encampments, and they tell them when, you know, things need to be cleaned up. I mean, things end up needing to be cleaned up, and that's just a public health hazard. It has to be done. But I think most of the people from the co-op, and certainly our LPD folks, go down and are as friendly as they can be, and they try to help folks. They're willing to bring folks where they need to go, if it's the shelter or wherever it is, they're more than happy to help out.
One of you, Counselor, had the hands up earlier. Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Fitzpatrick. So all this number of beds that you indicated from SMOC and from various organizations, there are beds available, and that's what you said, right?
We have beds currently available, yes.
Okay. So are you working with these providers, and how often do you, you know, come together and, you know, meet and talk in how we can best provide service to this homeless population?
I'm glad you asked that question. I'll be providing the manager with a report by the end of the week concerning, you know, we have the provider meeting, the Lowell Provider Meeting, which includes 50 to 60 different providers from the greater Lowell area who are involved in the homelessness issue. We also have the Co-OP meeting, which is the meeting I was at this afternoon, and that is where we go over every single encampment, how many people are there. It includes people from the co-op, it includes people from LTLC, it includes Elliott Church, it includes the people who are really boots-on-the-ground with our individual homeless problem. Again, this is individual homelessness, it's not families. So there's the Co-OP meeting, where we talk about that. We also talk about our regular utilizers, and there are some folks that we all know who they are, and we're just looking out for them. We want to make sure they're safe. We talked about several people today. I can't mention names, because there is, you know, people need to sign a piece of paper if they want to know who they are. So we have that. We also have the Connector Meeting. At the Connector Meeting, it's a little bit more broad, and we talk about a lot more of the people who are living outdoors. And we just, you know, we want to keep tabs on people. We want people to be safe. We want to do the best we can for them, and offer them, over and over again, offer them many services that are available at CTI, at the Elliott Church, at LTLC, and at lots of other organizations in the city, like Living Waters or Lowell Alliance. I mean, there's lots and lots of services available.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Managers. So annually, we get roughly quarter million dollars from the emergency shelter grant, is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. A quarter of a million dollars, is that through ESG? I apologize, Counselor.
Right.
Yes. That is, I am seeing the numbers in front of me. That's correct.
So are those money appropriated to maybe five or half a dozen of agencies? And what are those agencies, Mr. Manager?
The agencies that do apply, Counselor, will be vetted through the CDBG process, which I know that the Assistant City Manager has most of that information, but it should be in your packet as well. That would be Women in Transition, yeah, I was going to say, Women in Transition, Community Teamwork, Elliott Presbyterian Church, House of Hope, and SMOC, LTLC. Those are the folks who received the funding from the last, from the last CDBG.
Are those same organizations, if they reapply, they get it every year? How does it work? it work?
So, annually, we open ESG applications to folks that, various organizations, depending on, you know, so ESG has its own standards. So, we get a variety of applications annually from organizations. Some often come back each year. So, for the most part, we have sort of a number of organizations who do often get awards annually. But it is a competitive grant process. They do have to apply every year. It's not an automatic allotment of certain funds.
I noticed that in the report, you indicated that the, your fund program to support shelter operations and essential service as well as outreach activity. Can you elaborate a little bit on shelter operation and essential service?
Yeah.
What are those entail? Go ahead.
Mr. Rosspayers?
So, yes, annually, so ESG can be used for shelter operations, which is to literally pay for, like, staff salaries, for example, to actually run, run the organizations that are operating these shelters. We can also use ESG funds to do rapid rehousing, so to help pay, you know, first-class insecurity or something. To, we will fund organizations that help people pay for first-class insecurity to make sure that they get housed. We also, funds can be used, organizations will sometimes pay people's back rent to avoid people getting, you know, getting kicked out of their apartments, for example. And so, there's a variety of things. So essentially, the organizations will come to us, tell us, you know, are they applying for rapid rehousing, meaning are they going to be focusing their efforts on trying to get people back into apartments? Are they going to be focusing their efforts on prevention or shelter operation? So, it can be a number of things under the ESG umbrella that organizations can pay for.
So, suppose I provide service, shelter service to, let's say, a couple dozen of, you know, unhoused population, a homeless population, a person. So, my building is not compliant. Can I use that money to make sure that my building are complying to?
So, ESG can't be used for physical building improvements, but CDBG funds can be. So, organizations would be eligible to apply to CDBG, for example, to do physical improvement, capital improvements on their property, and that's a, that would come out of a different pot of money.
That's right.
So, we would still have the full amount available for ESG for the distribution for actual operations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Counsel Musia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The homeless issue bothers me tremendously. I'm not going to deny that. And you hear stories about camps are being cut down, and people are homeless, and they're meant to go elsewhere, or this, that, or the other. So, all this, I don't know the answers to this. And I hear that there's beds available. Don't kid yourself, there's beds available. I don't know that. So, I did a little investigation, and I talked to seven people, seven people that are in the know, that know all about this, much more than I could ever know. And I didn't talk to these people altogether. I talked to them individually, unbeknownst to each other, and I asked the same questions. And each one of those seven people told me the same, same thing. There are beds available. Contrary to what you know, there are beds available. I'm believing what they're saying. Seven different people, unbeknownst to each other, told me that beds are available. Now, when you hear people say, we have 20 beds, they, we have to throw people out in the street, and they had no place to go, that's not true. The 20 people that were displaced from this particular organization were offered a place to stay. They were never thrown out into the street, into the environment. Out of the people, there were a few that refused to go in a place. They preferred to be outside. You can't force someone inside a hotel or whatever when they don't want to go. You can't make them do that. When they take a homeless camp, and they, they tell you, they don't just barge in and disperse you, they tell you, we're going to come, and we're, we're abandoning, we're take, you have to leave this. It, there's a mess, there's a health hazard, we can't allow this. You can understand that. It makes sense. We can't allow you to live like this. Lo and behold, they find a place for each one of them before these camps are dispersed. I want you to know that. I'm not saying this. I'm not making this up. Seven different people unbeknownst to each other told me this, that are in the know, and I believe them. You heard the director come forward for homelessness, and she said, there's beds available. Yes, there are. There are people in the street, in the woods, places they don't want to come in. I can't force them. But, so, I feel better knowing that they didn't just get their home ripped from under them. They were offered a place, and it makes me feel better to know that we did it humanely. I want you to know that, because I'd be the first to squawk if it was done any other way. And if you are homeless, I still respect you. And the lady that spoke, I'm very sorry too, and I apologize, because I don't want anybody to feel that they're less than anybody else, because they're not. That's just what I wanted to clear up. Thank you.
Counsel Kishian?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. What do we do with homeless families? Do they stay together for services? How do we deal with a family that's homeless? Do they all stay together for these services, or how is that treated?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. I may be reaching out to my, the experts here as well, but in the homeless, from homeless families, they have a right. And CTI is another one of our partners that hasn't been talked about tonight. They do an awful lot. The House of Hope does an awful lot with homeless families. So, the, it's very different in Massachusetts, and I'm looking tomorrow, because we've talked about this many, excuse me, Ms. Fitzpatrick, we've talked about this many times. In Massachusetts, families have a right to be housed. So, when those housing, excuse me, when those family units are together, they have that right. And places like CTI and the House of Hope, and I know I'm missing someone, folks, I apologize, but they are the ones that really step in and assist the city to ensure that to happen. We know each and every one of us have been to different toy drives and whatnot for these different organizations, and I'd probably prefer just to leave it at that. But there is a state law giving that right, where families must be housed. One of our challenges, of course, is the housing of individuals. And the individual housing is where we kind of come into this problem, that we've stated we have, and I think I told all the councilors, 61, I think, was the number, that we were discussing with the individual homelessness, what we've been doing. A big tip of the cap, as usual, goes to the co-op team and Health and Human Services and homelessness for getting this done. But, so it's a little bit different, Counselor, when it comes to families and individuals. But I'd like to ask Ms. Fitzpatrick to make sure that even I have that correct.
You do, Mr. Manager, Mr. Manager, Counsel, Mayor. Yes, all I would like to add is that what happens, you know, with individual homelessness, the protocol is that they have to go to the shelter on Middlesex Street. That's where the triage takes place. They, they won't go to a hotel, they won't go anywhere until they go there and get triaged. With families, it is very different, and families are entitled to housing legally in the state of Massachusetts. Unfortunately, what happens is we find a place, I say we, it's mostly CGI that works with families in the city. A place will be found, absolutely, but it might be in Springfield, Massachusetts, because we are running out of capital here, I mean, the whole state. Sometimes people don't want to move to Springfield, Massachusetts, understandably. But sometimes that's where, you know, we do the, they do the best they can to keep people as close to home as they can be. But the real estate is limited, unfortunately. But families definitely are housed immediately.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Man. Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. And just to follow up, per the council's request, and this was all going to be coming out to all of you, but since it's a timely topic, I have been meeting with, NEMCOG has been putting together all of the town managers in this area, and we've been talking about this homelessness. We've been talking about family homelessness. So, I wish I could remember who the maker of the motion was, but I think it was all of you, to be quite frank, when we're talking about homelessness. Those discussions, meetings have been happening. Ms. Fitzpatrick and I were just at one yesterday, Monday.
Stayed today, I'm not sure.
It was yesterday. And we are having these discussions in regards to family homelessness as well as individual homelessness. And I have to say something for the town managers that are around us. They're listening. They're paying attention. This is a national crisis. They understand that we, I really honestly feel as though, after yesterday's meeting, we are not in this alone. And that's a, that's kind of exciting. But that's something that this council had requested, or asked me to do, and we have been doing it. It's hope, and I'm hoping over the next couple of weeks, you'll hear about it in the communications to the council that we have committed to every two weeks on the Thursday, about these meetings that we've been going to. And I am concerned, quite frankly. I'm extremely concerned at what's going to be happening, or what's, what April and May and the warmer months, although we haven't hit that cold snap yet. I'm extremely concerned about homelessness between now and what awaits in April and May. So, we are working at it, and I appreciate the council's recognition of the hard work that has been doing by Health and Human Services, the co-op team, CTI, Lowell Housing Authority is another one with our families, and we shouldn't get into naming folks, because I probably just missed somebody. But we have a lot of people that are really pushing to make sure this is a priority of this administration, this council, and most importantly, this city of Lowell.
Counsel Tringwada?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't finish yet.
Counsel Kishian, you have one more question?
I have a few. So, you know, I want to thank the administration, the city staff for cleaning up, you know, all these parks they keep going back to. There's a lot of services here, the school department, and of course, the city council. This city council has tried to address this homeless situation since the day we took office. Many of us may agree or disagree on what the solutions are, but there are a lot of things that are put forward, that we've asked the management team to look into. And I do take exception to someone saying they're treated like a second-class citizen. Why don't you go ask one of the children's parents over at the STEM how they feel with their kids over there? Why don't you go ask the people who live in the areas of all of these camps? Try to go into a store when someone's sleeping in the door, or they're yelling at the person with their child. So, our job is to try to find a solution, but at the same time, it's to protect the public, who feel like a second-class citizen, but are treated like it. So, to come up with these solutions is not easy for this board. It's not easy throughout the country. And we're trying to look at unique things. We have a counselor who has put motions on that. Maybe people are in favor of, maybe people aren't in favor of. You know, there's a $33 million parking garage. But when you have someone stand up here and tell you that they're treated like a second-class citizen when there's a resident who sends their child to school, and has to build fences up higher, and clean areas, and they clean the area for things, and there's feces all over the place, they've impeded on all these things, we're trying to give you the services. You don't want the services because of, you like your environment that you're within. But it doesn't meet what the standards are for the city and the citizens. So, we're all on a crash course here that we're going to have to take actions. And I think that this council, and I agree with Counsel Rourke and Counsel Robinson when they say that. I mean, there is, you know, we've tried, and I applaud the management team, the school department, CTI, all of the groups out there who are trying their hardest to resolve this. We need to get work programs together. We need to get mental health back in this state. In this state, maybe there's a new governor who will go back on the things that past governors have walked away from with the mental health issues. But we have to resolve it that way. We have to start teaching kids in the school system about homeless, and start trying to give them the tools so that they don't become it. And, you know, to sit here and have somebody tell us that they're being treated like a second-class citizen, when we're getting the phone calls from all of these residents who feel like they pay the bills, and they actually are out there with their children, trying to make a better life for them. So, I applaud all of you for your hard work.
Counsel Tringwada?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did just want to make a comment relative to the city's policy towards encampments and making sure that we're, you know, looking out for various public health issues that are created. You hear different opinions throughout the community relative to the policy of going out and clearing encampments. But what I just want to say is, in my view, the compassionate approach here isn't necessarily just looking the other way, or taking no action, because there are individuals who may wish to remain in the encampment, sleeping outside throughout the winter. To me, the compassionate thing to do is to ensure that anyone residing within this city, particularly during the winter months, has a warm and safe place to stay, even if that is not their immediate wish. We've had relatively mild weather over the past several weeks, but as we all know, we will experience another cold snap with dangerously cold temperatures. And in my view, I just don't want to see anyone in our, in our community sleeping in the elements during weather like that. So, I know I've asked this question on, you know, a number of occasions, have spoken with the manager, and just kind of confirmed about the services that are being offered to individuals who are currently residing in encampments, as we have the co-op team and the police department and different organizations go out and give them notice about, you know, when the camps will be cleared. And I think that's just incredibly important, because to me, that is the compassionate approach, is to let those residing within our community know of the resources that are available, so that they can sleep somewhere warm, safe, and be offered a meal. So, I know it's, again, not always within the immediate wishes of those individuals, but to me, it is, it's important that that is done, and that is done in a compassionate and respectful manner. And it is my understanding that that is what is occurring within the city. So, I just wanted to make that comment. And I did just have one specific question to follow up on, relative to the emergency services grants that are being offered. I know in the information that we received, it had the recipients of those grants for, within the past several years. As was mentioned, for the current fiscal year, the grants haven't been awarded yet. Sounds like the application process began in November. I don't think we heard a specific timeline tonight for when those grants might become available, but because we're really in some of the critical months with respect to, you know, homelessness and staffing needs within these, within these places, are we talking that some grants may be made available within, you know, weeks, months? But is there a specific timeline?
The ESG and CDBG round for fiscal year 2324 will close on January 27. So, the way HUD allots our funding, we're very grateful to be an entitlement community and have access to these funds, but these funds are coming through HUD, so the federal system is a bit slow. And the, so, we're going to be, we're accepting applications now for funds that will not be available until the next fiscal year, essentially. So, we'll be doing a review, making a recommendation. The council will be seeing that action plan recommendation likely in the spring, and then those funds actually won't be available until the next fiscal year. So, we're usually a fiscal year kind of behind, I would say, generally speaking. So, they're not, they're not very quick turnaround grants, unfortunately.
Mr. Manager?
I was just going to say, that does answer my question. I was kind of hoping maybe that the ESG funding might be on a little bit more of an expedited timeline than the CDBG funds, but does answer my question, so thank you.
Your question, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, the council, next week, will be seeing the rollout of ARPA as well. So, those funds, council, are going to be available a lot quicker than the CDBG monies. So, and homelessness, the homelessness tranche, if you would, is coming out first as well as some ECODEV stuff, which all the councilors will have prior to next week.
It's rare that we get this far into a discussion without mentioning ARPA, but timely juncture to bring it up, and that's great news. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson, you had your hands up earlier. Still have comment?
Thank you. Just a couple of real quick questions that came up during conversation. In the event we did run out of beds, are we in contact or partnership with surrounding communities like the Lawrences that might have additional resources available? communities like the Lawrences that might have additional resources available as well? Is that something that we would be able to offer in the event that we ever run out of beds, for one? Also, I think, this keeps coming up, we just saw it with Lowell Transitional Living Center. We had to expend resources to clean the area. I think we need to look, I brought this before, is there anything the state would authorize or offer in the form of a community impact fee for dealing with this kind of situation? And if not, then how do we get that ball started for the conversation? Because we are expending plenty of resources on just the cleanliness aspect of this alone, never mind anything else. I think anyone that's been by Lowell Transitional Living can attest that it's not a broom and a dustpan type of situation we're talking about here. You're talking about hazardous waste with used discarded syringes, human waste. I mean, there's a million things that are starting to pile up. And so, I mean, I guess for the first question, are we in collaboration with surrounding communities that do provide some kind of temporary housing resources?
So this question is best answered by the people that run the shelters. However, what I can tell you is that both CTI and, I'm sorry, LTLC, they can get more hotel rooms. You know, we only have so much DHCD funding, but if we needed to, I think, you know, no. The shelters in this state are in the same situation as us. The second part of your question, your second question about the Middlesex Shelter is that we have certainly recognized that, the people that run the shelter, SMOK, recognize that, and the manager and Sean, and I met about that Monday morning with SMOK, with LPT, Lowell Police Department, and we're treating Robeson Street, which is on the side of the shelter, as an encampment. So that's the way, that is completely cleaned up at the moment. I drove by the shelter just this afternoon. There are no tents in front of the shelter. There are no people sleeping on the sidewalk in front of the shelter. And the people at SMOK have put together what they've called a clean team, and that is clients who are living in the shelter, if they're willing, are helping out with keeping the area clean, not only just around the shelter, but further down Middlesex Street as well. So we have recognized that, and it has been addressed. And it will be monitored very closely.
Thank you very much. And again, I know this is just one topic tonight. I definitely think like Counselor Scott and I have filed in the past, we need to get a summit together with as many people in the room for a lengthy discussion and try to flesh out some of the things that people are willing to commit to, short, long, and medium range. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick, for making yourself available to answer questions tonight. No other comments in that. We now go to the next motion response on tax title auction update. Counselor Janess, any comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the administration for this report. And also, I'm just a little curious about what we're looking at for timeframe. The only time that was mentioned was by the end of the fiscal year. The last date that this board was given was October. And I understand that in November, there was some significant law department turnover, and there's been a lot of things up in the air on the third floor. So I'm just curious, you know, when we're looking at, are we looking at winter, spring, and, you know, just what needs to happen for this to move forward at this point? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the councilor, and I want to say thank you to you and Counselor Scott. We should have included that, my apologies, Counselor Scott, your motion as well, both of you attacking this title piece. And you are correct, Counselor, we did have a little bit of some lag time there, but we're looking currently right now to start advertising as early as February of this year. We're not going to be waiting until the end of the fiscal year. And after the advertising is completed, we will start the public auction side. You know, I believe that Mr. Ball in the Finance Committee has done a fantastic job in making sure that people understand what is happening in this situation with the public auction. I believe that Mr. Ball could probably speak to this. We have had many people come forward and say, oh, oops, you know, here we are, we forgot to do this. So I don't know, but we are ready to go. Mr. Ball?
Yes, thank you, counsel, Mr. Manager. Yes, we are ready to go. We're just finishing the final touches. We've done some public outreach, as the manager said, we've had some people come in and pay, but we're basically in the final.
Yeah, of course, the first thing is, we're always looking for people. Some of these bills, quite frankly, are a little bit more than quarterly, half-year, but we are hoping that that happens. But the final piece is what the council is looking for. We should be advertising by early February?
Yeah, right around early February. And then it will be advertised in Lowell Sun for 14 days, and then the public auction will commence.
Great, thank you. I'm glad to hear this moving forward and, you know, a pretty quick timeframe. I'm also glad to hear that, you know, we've gotten to the point where people are coming in and settling up their debts here, so.
Counselor, we've done a lot of outreach.
Yes.
Thanks to the Finance Team for that.
Yes, thank you guys for doing that. I think that's, you know, very important. Obviously, we want to, step one is to, you know, try to resolve these as amicably as possible. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager, if I may request a copy of those properties that will be published, because some of my constituents, they don't read newspaper, so they may not be aware of it. They received a bill saying that they're property. So if I could maybe receive a copy, and I will personally do reach out to some of my constituents to let them know that it's coming. So thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Counsel, I think that's a great idea. If everyone is okay with that, we can send that out tomorrow. Quite frankly, we've looked at it, and sometimes people, oops, you know, that's so-and-so's property, and that's something, we're not looking to take anything. We just want to put it on notice. So, Mr. Ball, if you can make sure that happens tomorrow to all the 11 councilors, and that will not impede our February advertising. Great, excellent. Thank you very much, Counselor.
No other comments in that. Motion response, we now go to the last motion response, E, on permitting process. Any comment, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. This is exactly what I was looking for. I don't know if, I think the initial motion, I was looking for a video tutorial. Is that something that might be in the works in the future? But I've got a lot of feedback, and a lot of people really appreciated you putting this together because it can be confusing. One of the things, once this came out, I received questioning on was the rate for police detail, because for some reason, they're explaining to me that price changes somehow depending. So is there a way they can get an accurate rate or price if they're looking into doing an event? But outside of that, thank you very much for this. Hopefully, we get a lot of people that want to throw events over the next.
Do you have a comment first?
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counsel, you are correct. Mr. Crew is putting something on that was a great idea that we're going to be hosting. And at that time, we're discussing having LTC in there to do the Q and A, tutorial maybe, it might be a better word. So, Mr. Crew?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager and Ms. Mayor, through you to the Counselor Robinson. I am reached out to LTC, and it sounds like the manager's office has as well, about recording the event next week. It will be in the mayor's reception room, so we have all the equipment to do that. But certainly, if that doesn't, if LTC isn't able to help us out with that, we will have additional resources available as well, while also having hard copies printed of the guide that'll be available in our office downstairs as well, to make additional resources easier and more available for folks.
So if a resident is looking for a copy of this resource, can they stop in somewhere in City Hall and pick up a copy?
Absolutely. After next Tuesday, they'll be able to stop by case, and they can pick up a hard copy from us right downstairs in room 7.
Excellent, thank you very much.
And sorry, one more thing, Counselor, and just related to the police detail is a little bit tricky because it really depends on the scale of the event, where you're doing the event, how many detail officers you need, whether a cruiser or not. So it really does vary a lot by event.
Fair enough, thank you.
Counselor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Peter. I just want to commend your report. You know, a great report, and I learn a lot. And it helps me in the situation where constituents who want to have an event, they ask questions. So usually, I receive a call. So now that I have information that I can pass on to the constituent who was looking to have a yard sales or a street event, things like that. So I really appreciate. So if people want it, they can download the guide, the special event guide, download from the city website.
Absolutely. If you go to the city website and go to the, click on the downlink to the Office of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, the link is available right there if you click on the permitting section.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That completes all the motion responses. Before we get into the information reports from the manager's office, Mr. Manager would like to introduce members, the new members to the Law Department. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. What I'd like to do is introduce Helene Tomlinson and Corey Williams, two newest members of our legal team, and just give them an opportunity to say something about themselves and just welcome them aboard. So thank you very much, Ms. Tomlinson and Mr. Williams.
Hi, I'm Helene Tomlinson, and I'm very happy to be here, happy to be serving Lowell. I have had 27 years of legal experience, and I look forward to using it here for the betterment of the community, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. I'll sort of echo some of the same words. Very grateful to be here. I'm excited to, you know, serve the city of Lowell. It's a great community, and I'm thankful to be a part of it. I'm really, I'm really looking forward to contributing and do whatever I can to help the city. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. I just also want to take an opportunity to thank Attorney Diaz and of course, Attorney McKenna for the hard work, everything that they've been doing over the past few months. The Law Department, we continue to move forward. We have a great team up there. I would name all of them. I've been up there often enough. But I would think that I just want to say to Althea and John, thank you very much for holding on and, you know, keeping the city running in the right direction. And I'm very, very excited for our new team to be here. And thank you all very much, and thank you to the council for allowing us to get this done. We're not done. We are going, we have some other things, but after Ms. Tomlinson and I talk, she gets her feet wet, we're going to talk about what the Law Department will look like in the future. So thank you again very much for all your patience and everything that you folks have been doing here on the council. Thank you.
On behalf of the city, I also want to welcome both of you to the city, and I wish smooth sailing for the city going forward. And also want to thank John for doing a fantastic job for the past couple of months. Keep everything at bay. Appreciate your service. Thank you. We now go to the next section, which is the 4.2 informational.
Before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take item 9.15 out of order. I know there's somebody here to speak. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Nour to take item 9.15, Counselor?
Correct.
Take it off order. That's a motion of 9.15 by Counselor Janess, request city manager have proper department investigate the findings of the Human Rights Campaign's annual municipality equality index, rating LGBTQ plus inclusion in municipal law and policy that show Lowell with the lowest score of the 10 Massachusetts municipalities ranked in this year's report and develop an action plan accordingly. Mr. Clerk, do we have a register to speak on this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Roland Bouchain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, manager, city councilors. My name is Roland Bouchain. I've been a member of the city for 11 years. I am an LGBTQI plus member of the community. I'm also an Army veteran. That's going to be important later. When looking at the report from the HRC, the city of Lowell received 50 points. Out of those 50 points, though, 30 of them come from state laws for anti-discrimination laws, nothing that the city of Lowell did. Two points are for protection against conversion therapy for LGBTQI youth. The remaining points, though, come from, we get 12 points for reporting the 2019 hate crime statute, sorry, statistics to the FBI, and six points for trans inclusion healthcare. The remainder of the 50 points that were available were concerning policies that addressed mainly the youth of this community, as well as the other members. When we see this, they are looking at the report, states that there are no elected or appointed LGBTQ members elected, that's on ours. That is for the LGBTQ community to deal with, and we will. We are starting to get more motivated, starting to get more active again, and we will start becoming more politically active. Me personally, I've been an activist for many years, but I've been the guy in the background. It's now time to, once again, step out of the closet and make myself known. For city leaders appointed, I know of at least one member of the city who is a member of the LGBTQ community. I don't know if he's open or not, so I'm obviously not going to even state his title. Now, there have been no positions publicly from the city council since 2018 that I've been able to find concerning any LGBTQ issue. The last time there was a public issue was the trans bathroom issue, in which originally the motion was to vote against or go against the state's bill, but the city council, in its wisdom, changed its mind on that one. And no policies. Now, back to being a veteran, there is no LGBTQ commission, which is one of the reasons the HRC has given us 50 points, because there isn't a commission. Veterans make up about 4.2% of Massachusetts' population. The LGBTQ population is 5.4%, slightly larger, but yet, again, no commission. There is one for the veterans. Awesome, great, I'm a vet. City council has a veteran subcommittee. Nothing for LGBTQ. Again, we may be only a percentage point higher, but we're still a larger community, and there is still intersectionality. We are looking ultimately just to be able to have our voice heard. We need to make sure our youth are protected. There are no policies in place for anti-bullying for the LGBT youth. There is, sorry, no anti-bullying policies and support for our LGBT youth that I was able to find, and what the HRC commission was able to find. This is something that hits. It hits because of the fact that amongst youth, LGBTQ youth ages 10 to 24, suicide is the second highest rate. I know, at the age of 16, I had my first suicide attempt, followed by four others. Rightfully, they all failed, but still, I'm speaking from experience. I grew up in the 70s and 80s. There definitely wasn't any support for LGBTQ. This is 2023. This needs to change. We are now seeing that LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide, and every 45 seconds, there will be an attempt made. In the couple of minutes that I have been speaking, there have been at least three attempts, potentially an LGBTQ member of this city. We need to have this addressed. There is no excuse for the city of Lowell, the fourth-largest city. There is no excuse for the City of Lowell, the fourth largest city, to have the lowest score. I always see there is a lot to like about Lowell. I agree. There is a lot to like. I moved here. I bought a home here. But there's a lot more that can be done. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other registered speaker?
No more.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Bouchain for your words here tonight. Some very moving things that you had to share with us, and I appreciate you being here and sharing your story. I'd also like to thank the members of the LGBTQ community in Lowell that brought this information to my attention and asked me to bring it to this floor. I'm happy to be able to bring it here. I do think that this scorecard has some very clear steps that we as a city can take to be a more inclusive and more equitable city. I think there's some stuff on here that, that we might be doing already, but we may not have it codified. We may not have it exactly what HRC was looking for. And, Mr. Manager, I understand that you've, you and your staff have reached out to the Human Rights Campaign to begin that conversation, and I thank you for that, and I think that's an excellent start to this process. This, this situation speaks to me again about the need for the DEI position here in the city. I think that if we had somebody in that role, this kind of report would be something that could land on their desk and could be something that they could take and run with. So, I hope that part of this response, you know, will look at, at hiring for that position. I understand it's, you know, in process, but I'd like to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. But thank you to my colleagues for, for taking the time to dive in on this. I know I sent everyone this information ahead of time because it was pretty thick and not really a standard motion. And there's a lot of information here. I look forward to seeing the response and seeing where we can go with this, and really looking to build a more equitable Lowell as we move forward here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council. Councillors, I don't typically speak about a motion before us, but if it's okay with the councillor, we have had this discussion in my office. Inabel Dominguez has been working on this, actually, and we have reached out to these folks. This is very obtainable. This is something we should be doing. Every one of the councillors have called me and talked about this, where this is extremely important to ensure that everybody feels welcomed in the city. And I want to say thank you to the councillor and to the folks that brought it to my attention as well. But once again, we have reached out to HRC. We, I'm sure we will be talking to them, but Inabel has been working to find out how we can do this. She has actually seen a couple of items that maybe we need to raise awareness to, or more awareness to, some in our HR policies that are there that maybe people just aren't aware of, whether it be joining the City of Lowell for employment, or what is required and what people are thinking about. So there's a lot here. We've really started to dive in this, and I just wanted to let you know that, you know, the City of Lowell is, is a welcoming place, as each councillor has called me and talked to me about this. We do work closely with all of our partners, whether it be, here I go again, naming, which I shouldn't, but, you know, Center for Hope and Healing and Creative Little Health Alliance and so many, so many of the organizations that, that try to help and make our city better. So, I appreciate that. I look forward to responding to this. And as, as you all know, I don't normally respond to this, but this is an important issue that I know is near and dear to everybody that I'm looking at right now because of the, the amount of phone calls and the, the information that the council had sent out. And I would hope that this is dealt with in a, in a, in an immediate fashion, where we know the City of Lowell is welcoming. We want to make sure everyone knows it, everyone else knows it as well. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the speaker and thank my colleague for bringing this forward. Something that, that stood out, listening to the speaker, and I'm not sure what can be done, but that's a good point. We have a veteran commission. I mean, I'd like to see if that's something that potentially, why can't we create a commission for community members that, that would like their input addressed? And we could hear firsthand from the community, what are some of the things that they would like to see from the city provided, and, and some of the things in the future that they'd like to see memorialized, that, that would kind of keep the feeling of, of welcoming and invited in, in part of the community. So, I don't know if that needs to come in a form of a motion, but if we have a veterans' commission, I, I think it's only right. As the speaker spoke, we have a larger population in the state than we do veterans. So, I, I think that's something warranted in our community. LGBTQ plus commission or subcommittee would be something that I would support. Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Councilor Janess for bringing this motion forward. I think any way that we can make people feel more welcome in the city and reduce discrimination is very important. I did take some time looking at the website. I did have some questions around the survey itself. It said that they send a scorecard to the city back in March of the prior year, and the city has time to respond and go through because what it says is that a low score does not necessarily mean that we're not a welcoming city versus another city that has a high score, but it means that we have policies that aren't transparent and can't be found. And that's done through their public research, which could miss policies that do exist. I do believe we have policies around bullying, around LGBTQ students. I do think there are policies that possibly could have been missed in this. So, I was just asking, I guess, around that outreach that was done by this group, and if there was a missed opportunity for us to respond to it. Also, I know in the Clifton Larson audit, there was information, and they are talking about how LGBTQ recruitment and veteran recruitment was low, and that there were products recommended that we used called Circa Works. So, I don't know if there's other things that we can look forward to, just to make sure that those policies are in place and are reported back to this group. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you for, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. During the transition, I think what might have happened with this administration. But that's why we wanted to reach out immediately and to try to find out how we can get there. But I think not only should we get there, we should excel at it. So, I think that's going to be this opportunity. And what councillor Robinson had brought up, we are talking about, you know, putting that together. This has been a discussion we've been having for a little bit, and a little bit, I mean, the last two, probably three weeks. So, I do feel confident that with Inabel, you know, leading the charge here, Ms. Dominguez, leading the charge on this, in my office, making this happen, I'm feeling very confident that we will get to implementing this. But I can only say that through the March, there might, when I was coming in, there might have been a mistake that I would own, that we didn't reply back to those, back to the organization. But that has been happening, that what, we are doing that now.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that. I know it's something, a number we're certainly not proud of, and that it's not something that I expect that you would ever, you know, ignore. Thank you.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment, and first, want to thank Councilor Janess for filing this motion. I think I looked at this as an opportunity for the city to do better, to include everyone who live and work in the city. So, going forward, if it's in a form of having a commission or whatever that had to happen, you know, receive it, then, then, you know, this is an opportunity to do better for the city.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo those remarks. Thank you to Councilor Janess for putting this on. Thank you to the speaker that came down. And this is, you know, what we should be doing, this is what we are doing, moving ahead, inclusion, including everyone. It's a welcoming city, and under this new administration, I'm glad that we're going to take this on, and appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
Councilor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Manager Golden, did we know that this study was out there prior to Councilor Janess bringing it forward?
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. I became aware of it maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And I, maybe the same way the councillor was. We started to look at it to find out what could be done. I was completely unaware of the March deadline, but I would still own that, that we should have caught it. But, no, so maybe right there in that timeframe, at the same time as the councillor. Matter of fact, we exchanged text messages on it in the sense of, you know, great motion, because we are working towards this. As councillor Scott had stated, I truly feel we are a welcoming city, and we need to make sure that everyone else feels that way. And to councillor Robinson's point, we need to know what people are thinking and how to, how to make it more welcoming, you know, how, how people feel that way. So, we're, we're all in the, pretty much in the same timeframe. Councillor?
I'm just thankful that councillor Janess brought it forward, and for the speaker's speech on, on the whole process. Not knowing it, I think now that we know it, we could actually do better at reporting and bringing it to the open than what we do. And, you know, going back, my mind was thinking back to a time, and I bet you councillor Mercier probably served with the person. We did have an openly gay city council in Grady Mulligan. So, and I believe it was 1993 to 1997, or somewhere in those areas. But, and I believe the city clerk also served with Grady, who was an unbelievable person. And a lot of the arts downtown were because of a lot of motions that he actually put forward to bring that community together. So, I, I think this is a great motion, and I, I think anytime we can look at studies and do better on them is, is a positive for the city. Thank you.
No other comments. I just want to make a quick comments from up here. There's no objection. And I want to thank the speaker for coming out to speak tonight. And to all the councillors' point, to the city manager's point, obviously, this is a great challenge to us, a good opportunity for us to do better, to be more transparent. But to the LGBTQ plus community in our city of Lowell, please do not let any tight score undermine all the work, the relationship that we have with each other. We are 100% in supporter of all our friends within the LGBTQ community. And as all the councillors mentioned, this is moving forward to make it more transparent, to move a policy. But in terms of relationships, in terms of the city, the type of people who we are, we are a welcoming community. We would not be here, we cannot be one without the other. We share the same space. We share everything. We share all the good things in our city. We share all the bad things in our city, too. But us working together, that we become friends, we become brothers and sisters. And anything we can do to support the LGBTQ community, whether through that type of testing, whether through anything, let us know. We will continue to build this relationship. Thank you for being here. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to take a quick moment to thank all my colleagues and the administration for the support on this motion. I'm really happy to, to have this much support on this. Thank you.
Sure. We now take a voice vote on favor, say aye. The poll say no, the ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you. We now go back to where we left off on the information reports. We'll start with the GFOA budget award, fiscal year '23. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. I just want to say congratulations to our finance team and all of the department heads throughout the City of Lowell. The Government Finance Office Association has presented an award for distinguished budget presentation for operations and capital budget. And as many of you can see, it's a, it is a significant, significant achievement. The City of Lowell has received it since 2015, and I think it's just an opportunity to recognize the fact, out of the 22,500 members that are in the, the GFOA, that only 1,700 are receiving this type of award. And I want to say a special thank you to our CFO, Connor Baldwin, as well as Austin Ball, for all the hard work that you folks have done. And I know that our auditor has always been helpful, and we thank her for everything. But I don't want to leave out any of the department heads who work hard to make sure that we are, we are doing the right thing by our finances. So, once again, appreciate all the hard work by Mr. Baldwin, Mr. Ball, our auditor, and our entire team down there, Ms. Oaks, and all of the department heads. Thank you all very much.
Any other comments? Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just want to congratulate, you know, CFO and the department, Arthur as well, you know, for the continued great work, year in and year out. Thank you very much.
No other comments. We need a motion to accept and place on FAB by Councilor Rourke, second by Councilor Yum. On favor, say aye. The poll say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to section 4.3, Communication from City Manager Request of State Travel, One LPD. Any comments or questions from any councillors?
To approve.
To approve by councillor Noon, second by councillor Janess. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
11 years.
Item 4.4, Communication, Reappointment of Troy Depeza and George Valores to Historic Bourne. Any comments or question? Councilor Noon motion to approve, second by councillor Mercier. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
11 years.
We now go to section five, which are the votes from the city manager. We already have taken up item 5.1 vote. We now go to 5.2. Vote transfer 2,1,400 DPW, waifu reading and second reading by title motion. City of Lowell and city council vote to transfer funds from city manager's reserve for wages account into a number of salary and wage accounts in the Department of Public Works DPW. Mr. Manager, do you have a statement?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. First and foremost, I want to thank the council very much. This wage transfer is something that we've all recognized for, for some time, and it's been extremely important to everybody. And I would consider this one of the goals, one of the, the main goals of the city council and the administration. So, to say thank you to that, to this council, and to retaining the current employees that we have, attracting new employees, and continuing the quality workforce that we have. Each and every one of us know that since 2018, we've had the Collins Center study that was completed. And in that Collins Center study, it had noted that there are a number of departments that may need a wage adjustment. So, since that, this process, I have to tell you, we've been talking about this since I first, first got here. This process has taken a lot longer than I ever anticipated, trying to, to, to speak to different departments. But it really is a thank you to the council for allowing this to happen. First and foremost, the council has acknowledged that there is an issue, and that something needed to be done, and allowing the administration to do it. With that thank you to the council, I also want to say thank you to the Human Resources Department for every, for all the help that they've had in this Phase One. What I'm referring to is Phase One. I want to say thank you to the auditor of the Law Department, and of course, my team, as well as the folks who've been working extremely hard, meeting with us over at 1705. But, but as I'm describing this quickly, Phase One, that you're hopefully going to vote on tonight, is going to impact all of our skilled trades folks. And those skilled trades folks, once again, has, has been recognized in that Collins report with our HVAC, our plumbers, and our electric, electricians. I would like to bring up that this is the first time we are recognizing masters. So, in the plumbers, in the electrical field, we have something that I'm sure every councillor here is very familiar with, is the journeyman and the, the master electrician or master plumber. Per the council's suggestion, requests, discussions, inside of this vote is also the creation of an apprentice program. That apprentice program is something where we are going to create a feeder system for our future, and we're really going to look to start to recognize the new talent that is out there. I think that's extremely important, given the fact that it is so difficult to come across talented individuals that can the city. But in, with this wage adjustment, we've also asking for things coming back. And that's time, management, materials, inventories. These are all requirements, daily record-keeping, and an electronic system similar to what I would say would be an iPad, that our professionals are going to be carrying with them to ensure that, to give you an example, looking at the HVAC in my office, for instance, taking a photo, ensuring that they log everything in as to when they were there last, what was done, what did that particular piece look like. The professionals at 1705 were very excited when we had this discussion. So, that's what we'll be voting on tonight. And I want to also say that the administration, as well as, once again, auditing and HR, it takes the whole team to try to put this together. So, in Phase One, the folks that'll be impacted are the HVAC folks, which due to this, we've had a number, Assistant City Manager Machado has pushed this, and we have, I believe, two or three people that have already applied. We are looking at bringing in some additional HVAC folks. The plumbers feel as though we'll be able to fully staff. And that's all under Phase One. With Phase Two, these discussions are already happening. A lot of people are wondering, and quite frankly, they didn't think it was going to happen, but it is happening. Under Phase Two, as soon as we receive our additional information from the UMass Collins Center, the discussions have been underway with my team as a whole, and the auditor, and the CFO, and whatnot, and 1705. The discussions have been very productive. The discussions have been great. And that's going to take care of the remaining folks in lands and buildings, DPW and parks. Once again, those discussions have started, they haven't completed. We are waiting on our final copy from the Collins Center, but we do have some back of the napkin, I'd like to say, discussions, but I'd like to see it in completion. That will be a second transfer later on, hopefully sooner rather than later that I'll be coming back. But I really have to say thank you to the City Council for allowing, allowing me to do this. And the only way I would be allowed to do this is because of the budget that we passed back in July 1st. We're not only looking for wage adjustments, we're going to be looking at other adjustments within Phase Two. At this time, I probably would like to keep those to myself, considering it's a, it's a discussion between myself and 1705. So, once again, this is a day to be celebrated. I really truly believe that. This Council has taken this issue on to retain, to attract, to retain our quality workforce that we have, and to attract a quality workforce. This is vitally important. We took this serious, and I have to tell you, I thought I was going to be able to get this done a lot quicker than I, than I, than I did, and than I have. We're still going to continue to work through this, and we have other departments to work with. I thank the Council very much for allowing me to do this, and I know that the employees throughout the city of Lowell will appreciate this. They work hard. They deserve to be compensated the way some of our surrounding cities and towns are. So, that is the reason for the wage transfer. And to all of the Consulars who've come to me on a number of occasions on creating this apprentice program, we're going to have that real opportunity. We're going to have that opportunity to have our master electricians and our master plumbers train, assist, help. And we're going to pay these, I mean, I'd like to say they're young, but some of the apprentices won't be. Some of the folks we met were second jobs. They were looking at second jobs. But I think this is a real positive piece. The Council should be really congratulated. This is, this was difficult. This was difficult for you to do, and I appreciate it, and I know the employees are going to appreciate it. And I gladly open up any questions, provided it doesn't lead me to any of the discussions I've been having with the union at this time. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, I know we've talked about this. When we talk about skilled trades, at Wastewater, they also have an electrician. So, we talk about skilled trades, the electrician out there is not part of 1705. So, are they going to be included shortly in this, or is it, how do you manage that? Because as we looked in the past, we've watched these type of deals happen, and it costs one department at the, at the gain of another. We've watched the water department. The water department has been depleted because you can go down and drive a plow truck on overtime and get $3 more an hour on top of your overtime hours, where you don't get that when you're out doing water main breaks. So, now we're paying contractors to do water main breaks, and we're losing the help from the water department to go into other departments because it becomes an equity piece for them to gain the funding. So, when we start looking at these pieces, and I don't disagree with the raise piece here, I just disagree with how we have to use the mechanism to try to make equality across the board. We talk about skilled workforce, and we're giving electricians a raise down at DPW. The same raise should go to all the other electricians in the other departments. And when you look at that piece, if you don't do that, what happens is the person at Wastewater feels undervalued, and they'll either transfer to the DPW, or they'll, they'll leave. And I'm just bringing this, highlighting this to you, because I'm sure you understand that there's a problem at the water department right now in retaining help. And they are skilled employees. They have water, drinking water licenses. It takes 20 CEUs. Water and Wastewater both have those issues. And the same is here with our clerks. So, I just think that if we're going to go across the board, and I know this is an immediate need because we have vacancies we're trying to backfill into, but we're going to have the same problem going down, and we're paying absorbent amounts of money for simple water main breaks right now from contractors that, because we hired employees who don't want to get licenses now, in positions where we used to have them required to get licenses, because that's what happens in government. So, I just would ask that we would look at these positions, the Wastewater one especially, where we're talking about electricians right now, and we have one out there, two of them out there, that are very, very good employees for the city, if we somehow can try to get them inclusive in this package somehow. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the Council. Council, you're absolutely correct. We, as this Council has shared with me multiple times, in each and every Council here, is respecting the employees and respecting how hard they work. I am, I'm in awe when I do go out and see them, when there's a water main break or something at night, and we show up and we have these discussions. So, I ask that the, the different departments give me the opportunity to continue moving forward. I would love to have gone straight through every department and given raises, right, you know, right from day one. But the wage disparity that I had seen in the beginning was currently right over at DPW. We will be looking at other departments. There is no question about that. This is not going to end. As I had stated earlier, Phase Two, right now, we are waiting on the Collins Center report. I do have information, quote unquote, back of the napkin, that will help, I believe, the discussion. But I do need to see that Collins Center report to make sure I'm doing the right thing. So, to answer your question directly, yes, we will be talking to every department, but it's just going to take time. And I hope that the employees are listening, and we, the Council, is allowing the administration to follow through one step at a time. I would, I would have loved to have done it blanket, but I just couldn't.
There's two employees at Wastewater that are electricians. Can we please look at them at the same time as this one goes through for electrician, so that we encapsulate all the electricians at the same time? The worst thing in the world is trying to find an electrician right now, as you know. So, I would hate to lose good, valuable employees out there because we're just going this way. And that's all what we're asking for, is those two employees be looked at as soon as possible. Thank you.
No other comments? Need a motion to adopt? Consular Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you for, to the administration for this work. I think it's an important step in the right direction, and just the first step. So, I look forward to supporting this for other city employees as we move down the track here. My only question for you is the attachment referenced memorandum of understanding that you entered into with our friends at 1705. Is that something that normally needs to come to this body, or no?
Mr. Manager?
Consular, no, that's something we could share at one point, but typically, it's the financing side that the Council discusses.
Okay.
This will, of course, be made public, but I'm still negotiating with some other folks as well.
Okay. Thank you. Still learning what we have to approve and what we don't.
Counsel, same here.
Any other comments? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Consular Rourke, second by Consular Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Consular Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Consular Drinkwater?
Yes.
Consular Getchier?
Yes.
Consular Janes?
Yes.
Consular Leahy?
Yes.
Consular Mercia?
Yes.
Consular Noon?
Yes.
Consular Robinson?
Yes.
Consular Rourke?
Yes.
Consular Scott?
Yes.
That's eleven years.
We now go to the next item, six ordinances from City Manager. Six point one, ordinance create position IT manager, career center. Any comments or question? Consular Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, two directors of career centers, Shannon Norton. So, I saw a memo you sent to Manager Golden. You indicated that prior to the request for this new position, you went out for IT consultant outside of the, the career center. So, with this, with the creation of this new position, that, that's, with this creation of this, you don't need to go outside to the, outside consultant, right?
Yes, that's correct. The consultants are very expensive, so we're hoping to bring this work in-house.
I like the idea of you doing that. So, will this individual work in partnership with the MIS team?
Yes, yes, just like we do now, especially on big projects. We work with Aaron very closely and his team.
It's a good idea to have staff that you can oversee, and then get things done, as opposed to having a consultant that costs a lot. So, I like the idea of the creation of this. So, this is funded by grant, is that correct?
Hundred percent, state and federal grants, yes.
So, the grant, if and when the grant ran out, let's hope not, that this person, position will be also eliminated, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item? Here, would you approve by Consular Noon, second by Consular, need a motion to refer to public hearing on January 24th, 2023, at 7:00 PM by Consular Noon, second by Consular Janes. On favor say aye, poll say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. Next section is the reports of subcommittee. I don't think we have any reports for tonight. We now go to section eight, petitions. Eight point one, claims for property damage. Any comments or questions? Consular Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to the manager. I really appreciate the package regarding the claim, because it's contained personal information. I appreciate it. But for those of the Consular who opt to receive electronic and maybe save the tree by having electronic version provided to Consular who opt into, to receive electronic. So, like myself, we use, I use the electronic version of the, the package of the meeting. So, this way, we save some staff time and some, some money on the city side, not producing a package this thick. So, that's the only comment and request that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. No other comment? Need a motion to refer to Law Department for report recommendation by Consular Scott, second by Consular Mercia. On favor say aye, poll say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to the City Council motions. We'll start with nine point one. Consular Getchier requests the City Manager have the property department provide the City Council with maintenance schedule and cleaning schedule of each parking garage. Second by Consular Rourke. Consular Getchier?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Manager Golden. What we're looking for is just, it seems like they clean them once, and then it's a long period in between, and it just, it's not very cleanly in some of them. So, I just wonder what their cleaning schedules are, what are their maintenance schedules as outlined in the contract? Because I know every time that this board complains, it gets cleaned, but it shouldn't rise to that level. It should be a continual maintenance process. And I know you're well aware of this stuff. So, it just gives a real bad, I don't know if anyone's been in them lately, but there's a, there's a smell sometimes to them. Thank you.
No way.
No other comments on favor? Consular Janes?
Just want to thank my colleague for bringing this motion forward. I'm in one of the, at least one of the garages every day. And, you know, the more we can do to clean them and make a better first and last impression to the visitors of our downtown, the better we can be. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. On favor say aye, poll say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is nine point two. Consular Noon, Consular Janes, request City Manager have property department provide a report on potential initiatives to reduce the commercial vacancy rate in the downtown central business district and the neighborhood business districts. Report to include potential funding for business districts from the American Rescue Plan, AOPA, or the state's Massachusetts Vacant Store Friends Program, MVSPO. Who would like to make comment on this? Consular Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the idea here is to try to reduce the commercial property vacancies in the downtown and the area of central business district, all as the neighborhood district. So, you know, you look at it, the more commercial property vacancy, the less tax revenue you come to the city, and that you're going to put that burden on the resident. So, that's, I mean, the vacancies, you know, from what I see now, I don't have the number, we don't have the number. But I, it's just, just for the naked eye, that vacancies, the commercial property vacancy in the downtown has grown. We need to look at way to reduce the downtown, you know, the vacancies there, maybe set up task force, looking into how we can work together with property owners, and with help from state and/or federal funding to, you know, incentivize them to do something with that, with their property, so that bring taxes, commercial tax back to the city, and helping the residential property taxes. So, that's the idea. And I know that the managers has some idea in mind, and put together his team. I'm looking forward to that report, you know, when that happen. Thank you.
On favor say aye, poll say no. Consular Robinson, you want to make a comment?
Thank you. One of the things I had mentioned before, maybe we could look into this as well, for incentivizing the downtown, is any way that there'd be a funding mechanism to offer something to the building owners for elevators. Because I know we do hear that is a big problem with the development in the downtown. And based on what the cost of an elevator, it could spur some pretty good development in that area. So, I think that's something to be mindful of. Thank you.
No other comments? The motion is adopted. We now go to the next motion. Nine point three. Consular Noon, request City Manager update the City Council on the status of potential help from the state regarding the $38 million overrun on the Lowell High School construction project. Second by Consular Janes. Consular Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want a Speaker to leave the office because, you know, the managers here, very good relationship with the Speakers, and he can bring that money. And I know that he talked about that, you know, a while back. So, we need it. I also learned that Consular Elliott, I mean, Representative Elliott, I'm sorry, has already begun working with the Worcester representative, because Worcester, too, has a cost overrun at their high school, Dory High School. I believe the cost overrun there, less than us, $23 million. So, they're hoping to get something together, filing with the House, and to try to get money. So, between, you know, Managers Golden and our delegation, maybe we can get something, you know, to the city of Lowell to, to help with the cost overrun on the high school. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Consular Getchier?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. I do believe more communities are starting to hurt by this whole process. And I do think you're going to get more and more people push. We've been at this for over a year. This board has tried to push for the, either the APRA funding, or some kind of state funding to try to offset this cost. And I do think it is down there. And if we keep pushing, with your help, obviously, we should be able to come up with something. So, I think this is a great motion by Consular Noon. We've been talking about it, making motions, all of us. So, thank you, Consular Moon, for, Noon for filing this.
Any other comments? Here none. On favor say aye, poll say no, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We now go to the next motion, nine point four. Consular Robinson requests the City Manager have the property department explore the feasibility of acquiring a mobile snow gun machine. explore the feasibility of acquiring a mobile snow gun machine to create more opportunities for our residents to enjoy public space in winter months. Second by councillor Mercier. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Just looking to see if this is something we could do. We have opportunity for one-time things. And one of the things I've heard consistently for a lot of residents is they wish there was more outdoor recreational opportunities for families and especially in the winter months. Everyone goes into hibernation mode. So if we could get people out of the house, maybe line the area with food trucks and all we need is the cold weather, which we'll be getting into eventually. But this would be something that at least get a price back and have a further discussion. Thank you.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a fantastic motion by councillor Robinson. I supported councillor Laurie's motions back, well, I wasn't on the committee, but I used to talk to him all the time about it. The motions around starting ice skating rinks outside back like when they used to have shed park. They used to flood the fields and kids could skate there. I'd love to see that come back, especially post-COVID with so many kids that were in their homes for so long. I think it's really important for kids to get out and socialize. I don't know if this is an APRA kind of coverage type thing because it's a wellness thing post-COVID. So I think it's a great motion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Gness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to seeing the feasibility on this. You know, I think it would be a lot of fun for the community if we can do something like this. It would suggest that maybe somebody reach out to Nishobeski area and speak to the snowmaking department over there and just get an idea of what goes into it. Thank you.
Councillor Yehm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to Mr. Manager. I would also say that it's a great motion and I would like to see a snow or skating ring in the North Common. There's a lot of family in that surrounding the North Common, have small children. I think the ice skating ring or the snow would be perfect for them, you know, after school. That would be great. Thank you. Thank you for a great motion, councillor Robinson. Thank you.
No other comments on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Item nine point five, a motion by councillor Robinson request the city manager have the property department explore the feasibility of extending fence along First Street to deter illegal dumping. Second by councillor Yehm. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. The section years ago that was put up, it did deter illegal dumping. Now the roadway is fixed, we're getting it again where it ends, where the guardrails are. So I mean, I don't know if maybe it's something we look at in sections, but we saw installation of a fence over there, did do what we were looking forward to do and now we have more space. So I mean, anything we could do to help that, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councillor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see a fence all along there as well. But there was a point in time where Midge Landry called up and said, could you get some help up there? And through our state representative in that area, his name is, was Tom Golden, helped to get the city crew up there, the state mass DOT. That fence that we had put up there years ago was put up by the state because that's state land. So I don't know that the city would pay to put a fence on state property, but that's what it's all about. And it really truly does need a fence there. So it's a great motion, but I don't think the city's going to pay for it. It's the state. But we do have people that are in the know with the state. So maybe they could help us secure some more fencing. Thank you.
No other comments on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is passed. We now go to the next motion, nine point six. Councillor Robinson request the city manager have the property department address overgrowth along First Street to enable efficient maintenance. Second by councillor Rourke. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Right now, again, First Street area, I've been over there because I've been getting calls for illegal dumping and trash over in that area. The weather's been pretty mild and I think we have a lot of overgrowth right along the street, which makes it a lot more difficult to clean even. So I think if we could get crews over there eventually or find out what the schedule is, to go over and just cut down the overgrowth during the winter months, it makes your life a lot easier in the spring. Thank you.
Any other comments? On favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We have a few more motions to go. We haven't been here for a while. Let us not forget the motion speaks for itself. Motion nine point seven, councillor Robinson request the city manager have the property department provide a detailed report with focus on cost to bring all services, including in parking enterprise contract in-house. Second by councillor Drinkwater. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. This came up in a conversation with the subcommittee and we're just looking for costs because to have the conversation, we need to compare apples to apples. Thank you.
No other comments on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Motion nine point eight, councillor Robinson request city manager provide an update on all current and future apprenticeship opportunities within organizations. Second by councillor Scott. Councillor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself.
There you go. Thank you, councillor. On favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to motion nine point nine. Councillor Robinson request the city manager have the property department provide an update on motion response from June fourteen, twenty-twenty-two, wastewater COVID monitoring. Original motion, motion response, May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. Councillor Robinson request city manager have property department provide an assessment of the infrastructure and staffing needed to conduct wastewater evaluation for COVID as well as the other health-related conditions that may be assessed via wastewater surveillances. Second by councillor Gitcher. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I believe this testing is already going on. It was just, I was looking for an update and I actually, someone had sent me the update and information data regarding this recently. So thank you.
No other comments on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Motion nine point ten, councillor Robinson request city manager explore using Hamilton Canal, Hamilton Canal Garage HCID parking facility as part of winter protocol and create seasonal unhoused shelter opportunities working with community partners organizations. Second by councillor Yehm. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. In light of the conversation earlier, we're being, it's explained that we do have beds available and they're not at a hundred percent. I'd like to withdraw this and I'll hold it in my back pocket for now. Thank you.
Excellent. That motion is withdrawn by the make of the motion. We now go to motion nine point eleven. Councillor Robinson request city manager have property department examine traffic lights at Bridge and VFW Bridge and West Six for possible timing adjustment to mitigate traffic backup. Second by councillor Rourke. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I've been told by a few residents that the timing situation on those two intersections, one way it's very fast, the other way it takes forever. So any adjustments or have traffic go over and take a look at it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
On favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is motion number nine point twelve. By councillor Yehm, request the city manager have appropriate department to provide water submetering in residential tendencies according to MGL Chapter one eighty-six, subsection twenty-two. Second by councillor Gitcher. Councillor Yehm?
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. No other comments on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. Motion nine point thirteen, councillor Gness and councillor Leahy request city manager have proper department investigate the procurement and installation of a memorial plaque for Angel Perez on Market Street. Who would like to go first? Councillor Gness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. We already kind of have precedent for this on Market Street. At the corner of Market and Palmer, there's a plaque for Camille, you know. So, you know, Angel was, was someone who was always hanging out on the street and looking out for, for the neighbors and the businesses in the area. So if there's any way that we can kind of continue his legacy of being out there saying hi to people, I think it would be a nice touch for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Councillor Leahy?
Thank you. Yes, he was known as the mayor of Market Street. So a great person, always looking out for people in the neighborhood. So anything we can do would be great. Maybe even a video board like councillor Gness suggested so we can continue to say hello to people. Thank you.
Any, any other comments? Councillor Gitcher, you have your hands up earlier. No other comment? On favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. The next motion is motion nine point fourteen. Councillor Gness, councillor Leahy request city manager have property department work to include a public menorah lighting during next year's holiday celebration. Who would like to go first? Councillor Gness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This suggestion was brought to me by one of my neighbors and one of, one of manager Golden's former colleagues at the State House. She, she asked that I bring this forward. I told her I would and she said it's important to get on it early because the rabbis book up pretty early. So if we can look at this, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Councillor Leahy, any comments? No other comments on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. The motion is passed. The next item is nine point fifteen, which we already have taken. We now go to motion number nine point sixteen by councillor Mercier. Request city manager find ways and means of televising the Board of Health Advisory Committee meetings. Second by councillor Rourke. Councillor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my understanding that the Board of Health Advisory Committee meetings are not televised, even though they are held in the mayor's reception room. You can televise meetings from that room also. So if the city council chamber is holding a meeting at the same time, you can have a televised meeting in the mayor's reception room as well. My belief is that the public has the right to know. We're not hiding anything from the public. There are no secrets here in this building, although I know councillor Leahy has a few secrets, but that's okay. When a meeting starts at a certain time, that is when the meeting should start on time. No fifteen-minute delays, no, I won't go there, but meetings should be conducted.
Everyone's getting it tonight.
Meetings should be conducted in a dignified way. No backs turned to the audience so that words are muffled, faces forward. Show respect. Board members should face the audience. People who are rude are expelled from the meetings. Everyone is included in this order. Public issues deserve a public airing on the city's public access cable TV channels and at a professionally run meeting. As of the present, neither of these two components exist. Whether we tape it or televise it live, LTC needs to be advised that the Board of Health Advisory Committee meetings are now on their agenda. So I think it's very important because the public does have a right to know what's going on in the city. And I know that most of the board meetings on different groups are held. I don't, and I did speak to members of the Board of Health and I said, I hope you're not offended by this. I would like to make this motion and they had no problem with it. They agree that it should be televised. Whether it's taped or not, people could then go back and see it. So it's not like I want to hear an excuse that, well, we do the school committee meeting and we can't be at both places. Tape it and show it at a later time and make it available to people to note, note when that time is that it's going to be shown. Because the public has a right to know and be informed. So there are people out there, whether you believe it or not, that do nothing but look at all these meetings. They enjoy that. I don't know probably why, but they do. So I just wanted to put that in there. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. The next motion is nine point seventeen. Councillor Leahy request the city manager have the proper department place Garden Road on the repaving list. Second by councillor Drinkwater. Councillor Leahy?
Thank you. If you could have engineering or whatever go out, take a look at the road. Lot of ruts in it, lot of water issues right now. And like a few other streets throughout the city, that's, it's just one of the streets that they've been very patient about. They've been trying to get this for a number of years. I was kind of hoping it would get done over the last several years, but it hasn't. So it's at the point where if someone could go out and take a look. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. The next motion is motion nine point eighteen. It's a motion by myself. Request city manager investigate installing patent bans in all city departments. Second by councillor Yehm. Just for the safety of our employees at city hall. No, any comments or questions by anyone? On favor say aye, councillor Yehm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great motion, but in addition to that, only the city of Lowell has an open door. That mean you walk into the city hall and you can reach all the department throughout. Some other cities in town, city hall, they have a, you know, like a checkpoint. You come in and you need to go see some other department. Then you have to be greeted or buzz in or things like that. It's just fortunately our city is safe so far, but I do not want to foresee anything that may, you know, in the future. And number two, if I may also talk to the, through you to Mr. Manager. In the tax collections office, I look at it as the teller at the bank. You have the teller who received the payment. You have the glass. And at the bank, they have the camera who protecting the employee, but also protecting the public coming in as well. And I think I would just take a step further, have the manager look at it to see if we can install security camera to protect the workers there as well. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments? On favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is also by myself. Request city manager provide an update on COVID protocol guidelines for city employees. Second by councillor Noon. The motion speaks for itself. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. The next section, the announcement. Any announcement?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bridge Club of Greater Lowell will present the Boston Bruins Alumni Game versus the Middlesex Sheriff's Hockey Team. That'll be this Sunday on January fifteenth at two o'clock in the afternoon at the Songess Center in Lowell. Tickets are twenty dollars. For children, it's sixteen, four-dollar discount per ticket of groups of ten or more. The tickets can be sold right at the door. So it's going to be a fun time and it benefits the Bridge Club of Greater Lowell, which offers a great service to the city and those that need help staying off of drugs, alcohol, gamblers, anonymous, all kind of things. They do a remarkable job. Thank you so much.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to say this Thursday at Lowell Memorial Auditorium, the Golden Gloves start. That's one event that's welcomed and finally back again. And also our Lowell Recreation Department is currently looking to train youth age fifteen-plus in the community for lifeguards for the twenty-twenty-three season. They're doing it in February vacation and I believe April vacation or some point in April. And if you are employed by Lowell, I believe there's no cost for the training. So you can visit lowellmass.myrec.com and they have all the information on there and it's on social media as well. So again, fifteen plus for lifeguarding. We have a lot of opportunities available. Thank you.
Councillor Gness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick things. First thing for my colleague councillor Mercier. Are you on the first line or the second line for the Sheriff's Department this year?
I shop and my skates.
The second thing is I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the Central Street Bridge is finally back open in both directions. So thank you to everyone in the city who worked on that. It's been a long time coming, but it was really nice to be able to take that ride off of Market Street this morning. off of Market Street this morning. So thank you.
Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that when you go to see the Bruins alumni in the Middlesex Sheriff's Office play on Sunday, that the real show will be at the intermission when the Greater Lowell Hawks Youth Hockey Organization will put some young skaters out on the ice. There's a couple of real good prospects, so make sure you pay attention then too.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. I just want to remind the council and everyone that's listening today that the trash schedule is on, there is no holiday schedule next week. We're getting away from that, so people should know that. Trash is on your regular day. So thank you.
All right. No other announcements? Motion adjourned by Council Gishia, second by Council Yan, on favor say aye, post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is passed.